All right, I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Planning Board Meeting of Nottingham, September 11th, 2019. Before I do ask everybody to acknowledge themselves, I just would like to make sure that we all acknowledge what today means to a lot of people, should be everybody in this room, 18 years ago, the tragedy that happened throughout the country. So, if everybody just gives a moment of silence for that, appreciate it. Let me call, let me first off introduce everybody that's on the board. Go ahead, go ahead, Leanne.
Leanne Gast, alternate.
Robert Davies, alternate.
Joyce Abaskam.
Tyler Eaton, Select Board.
Edward Veal.
Dirk Grotenheis.
Susan Mooney.
Jeff Pla.
Steph Casella, S.R.C.
And Gary Anderson is not here. I'd like to see Robert Davies for this meeting. The first item we have is a public hearing. A public hearing is to discuss the tree trimming and removal along Ledge Farm Road, Pahrara C 231, colon, 158-2. Chris Sterndale is going to brief the board on this. I see Josh Bouchard is here as well.
Thank you, good evening. You know me, this is Josh Bouchard from CMA. CMA does a lot of our engineering work. Josh is doing the engineering for us, did Cooper Hill last year, and he's doing Ledge Farm this year. As I wrote to you a couple of weeks ago, we are reconstructing Ledge Farm probably over the course of two, three years. We've talked about it at town meeting in the last couple of years. The 2019 town meeting appropriated some funds to get started on that project. We are starting this year at the end of the pavement near Rocky Hill Road, and will eventually work our way to the Epping Town Line. If you're probably familiar with the general area, that spot, that particularly vicious corner and hill that goes around the true house, it's the worst part of the road. Ledge Farm is probably our busiest gravel road, that's why it's on the top of our priority list. Work around 500 cars a day on that gravel road, so our long-term plan is to reconstruct it and pave it. We can only afford to do 1,700 squares, 1,500 feet this year, something like that. It'll take us from the existing pavement down the hill, around the corner, to almost where the dry hydrant is, if you're really familiar with the area. You have a set of plans. We've marked all the trees that we may need to take down. No stone wall impacts, so we're here, Ledge Farm as a scenic road. We need your blessing to move forward with that tree removal so we can do the work. I'll let Josh give you a quick technical run-through on the work, and take any questions and go from there, I guess.
Yeah, so as a part of, I'll just jump in here, as a part of our towns' regulations, the planning board needs to approve any tree removals on our scenic roads, and that aren't needed to be taken down for imminent emergency or damp.
Disease.
Disease or something. So, that's the reason why we're required to have a meeting for this.
If you want, I can, this is our plan set that we're put out to bid. That we recently put out to bid last month. So, Rocky Hill Road's over here, this is where the pavement ends currently here, so we're coming back a little bit in the pavement. We'll remove that first section of pavement, and then we'll start rebuilding Ledge Farm Road. This here is the S-curve. So, we're doing a couple of things here. The yellow is the proposed pavement. This little bit of gray area in here is the difference between the proposed pavement and the existing gravel road. So, you can see where we're coming, particularly through this S-curve, we're widening out this narrow section right here. We're bringing the road in a little bit on this side. We're widening the road out a little bit on this side, to try to make the road much more drivable. We're flattening these curves out, but right now they're very sharp, and we're making the radius of the curve flatter to make it more drivable. And then, at the same time, we are removing, this is the profile of the road, so as you're driving down Ledge Farm Road, this is the vertical profile of the elevation of the road as you're driving down. And as you know, there's a knob right about in this curve right here. We're going to take some of that out to make the vertical drive of the road smoother as well, so that it's safer. So, in doing these changes, we're getting the road to meet a 25 mile an hour, or 20 mile an hour design speed limit through this S-curve between the horizontal and the vertical changes. And then, our plan for the rest of the road, once you get through this S-curve, is that we will be at a 30 to 35 mile an hour speed limit design guideline. So, this is as you're coming out of the S-curve, there's some minor changes. We're basically maintaining the existing center line through here, but we're making the road width more consistent, which is why you see a little bit of gray right here. And also, we're, there's another knob as you're coming down around the corner. We're going to take that off, smooth this out, so it'll be a more consistent grade as you're driving down the road and through the corners. And then, as we're coming into here, we're at existing grade, and right now, we're just rebuilding the road as we're coming around the flatter curve. And then, terminating this project, this first phase, I'm not sure, it's the Kenny property, which is this property right here. I forget who this property owner is. So, back up one second. So, you have the existing pavement is the yellow, the difference between the existing gravel and the pavement is the gray. And the green area right in here is our clearing limits. This is where our contractors can be clearing trees to, doing slope work. This blue line right here, we're doing, installing some swells, constructing some stone line swells. You get the drainage off the roadway into a swell, and then build to discharge it, say, into this wetland over here, or some other areas further down the road. That's a brief road to the project. It is, so 1,700 feet. So, this is the first phase, and then, the plan is to do another phase, Phase Two, next year, and then follow up with the Phase Three the year after that. And we're not completely done in the third year, we'll be pretty close to the Epping Town Line.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, what exactly is the timeline, from when to when?
For construction this year?
Yeah.
The contractor will be starting probably early October. And talking with him really today, he figures how the bulk of the work completed in about a month. And he technically has, I think it's 60 contract days to get the bulk of the work done. And then, another, I think it's 15, 20 days to get reach final completion, which is cleanup and seating and stuff, so. But he figures about a month out of the 60 that he has.
Isn't there some sort of a timeline with the hot top availability?
Yeah, so, we'll need to make sure that when the asphalt's installed, that we're meeting the temperature requirements, which for base course pavement is 40 degrees. And the fees, usually you can meet those requirements in November, or November, not too much of an issue. Asphalt plants are still open, they just stay open until sometime, at least Thanksgiving, depending on whether it might be end of Thanksgiving, or end of November, really, December.
Thank you.
Mr. Bouchard, how?
Yes, ma'am.
How much will the road surface be increased?
The impervious area?
Where the people would be driving, historically, it was 18 feet.
Mm-hmm.
And when that section was tarred from Nottingham Square, it was increased to, I think, 20 or something, 22.
Yes, we're maintaining 20-foot pavement.
20 feet.
Which is about what's there now.
Now, in this first phase, are you going to be going over any culvert areas? Will that be further down in another phase?
I believe there, well, there's one culvert right here.
Mm-hmm.
We're not going to be impacting that one. This one here has already been replaced. We're going to formalize it with head walls, because there's no head walls currently, and then install some stone riprap to protect it from the naillets. And then, as you come further down the road, this one goes next. There is, I want to say the Jarvik Culvert, I think Jarvik, this Jarvik Culvert here is going in.
Mm-hmm.
This is for the Sweetser property.
Okay.
And then, there's a busy culvert right here that is reinforced concrete pipe. We're going to keep that one in place and just put a head wall in.
My other cap is Conservation Commission, and I know that along Ledge Farm Road, there is quite a bit of landing's turtle habitat.
Okay.
In fact, there was a large female that was hit and killed a couple of years ago that was estimated to be 60 years old. So, it's a big concern that these particular endangered animals are attended to. Do you have to apply with Natural Heritage Bureau and Fish and Game for these kinds of improvements to see what might be impacted out there for organisms?
Not that I'm aware of. This is a road rehabilitation project. We're, you know, both of our impacts are within existing roadway, within the town right-of-way, and we're installing swells, so.
Okay. Just recommended that culvert replacement, if you get to that point, to investigate the design that's supported by New Hampshire Fish and Game, the cement culvert with an open bottom.
Yeah, open bottom culvert, yeah.
Yeah, with regular stone, not riprap, to a, that'll be turtle friendly.
Yep. That's our typical, once we reach a certain culvert width, that's what we usually install or recommend installing.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything on this, on Ledge Farm Road that required, that would require something like that. I've thought maybe, I don't know. So, I think they're all 18, 15, 20 orange pipes.
Thank you.
Question from the planning side of things, so, we still have a lot of land in this, on this road, so we have to potentially have, you know, a thought process for potential build-out, and it's a little bit beyond the scope of this project at this time. But, like I noticed, you know, we're improving the grade a little bit, but still at a 10% grade. There's no plan, I guess, that that's going to be probably it for now. There's no plan.
Yeah, we're not recommending further.
For future phase to kind of try to bring that down any further. Because obviously, 10% grade's still pretty substantial on a.
It is. It's certainly better than what it is now.
Right.
But, the more you alter existing conditions, the further you increase the costs.
Yep.
And in that section of, this section of road, this is where we found our ledge. So, we did borings down this section of Porcon, I think is where we stopped the borings. And so, we just did ledge roads, see what we could find, took some material samples, too. So, you can see, we have refusal at six and a half feet, put and a half down, two and a half feet. So, the further we bring the grade down to try to flatten this out, you're going to end up, ledge removal is very expensive.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're trying to balance, you know, getting a safer road with cost.
Yep.
Doesn't the, the further you go down, doesn't that widen the impact on?
It does, too, because now you're going to have more slope impacts, because now you're down here, so up there, so you end up, you get wider.
Bigger footprint, yeah.
Yep.
And then, there's another spot where, there's an area proposed of asphalt curbing, you know, looks like that might channel any kind of runoff into the first driveway.
Yeah, it's as you're.
I don't know, is there, do you have any kind, is there any kind of, anything there to kind of protect that at all?
So, this driveway here, the driveway goes up to the house.
Yeah, okay.
So, that would keep the runoff along this curb line as you're coming around the corner, and then it would discharge into, into a swell, into the stone line swell right here. So, this curb line, as the water's coming down the hill, down to the S-curve, the water would discharge into the swell, and then continue down the road, then discharge into this wetland right here.
Cool, thank you.
Bringing it back to the reason we're here, you're here is the trees. What is in, so you've got these clearing limits, is that all trees will be cleared from that area?
That is the intent.
And what would be replaced in that area?
It would be long concedes. And then, on the steeper slopes, the contractor likely installs some can of erosion protection.
Any more questions from the board?
I have one more, please.
Yes, ma'am.
When you do erosion control, will you use the coconut fiber rolls?
That would be an option, yeah.
Because that'd be a lot.
Were you talking about the, like, the log rolls?
Yes, yes.
That would be at the contractor's decision. We didn't dictate what kind of erosion filler you'd use. I forget what they use on Cooper Hill Road. I think, he might have used them, I'm not positive.
Much better.
It's the same contractor. So, the contractor in Cooper Hill Road also got the contract for Ledge Farm Road.
Okay, much better than plastic.
Yep, I agree.
And that's actually Cooper Hill came out nice, especially, my concern was the crest of the hill there, and they did a good job with that, making that, I think it's safer at that hill now than it was.
Yep, I agree. And the same superintendent was on site, too.
I just have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of the trees are really close to the stone wall, like between the road and the stone wall. When the trees come out, do you think that'll impact the stone wall at all as far as stability?
So, we can review that with the contractor, and if we think removing the stumps that will impact the stone wall, we're talking about leaving those stumps there, if that's your concern. We can still cut the tree down.
Right. But, yeah, I wonder if the root system's helping to support the stone wall on some places.
And if not, we can look at rebuilding, like, that five-foot section. He pulls the stump out and then resets the stones on top.
Do you know how many trees are coming down, or located, or?
I don't know, do you know how many trees?
We didn't count them. Chris and I, two weeks ago, it was two weeks ago, we walked this section of Ledge Farm Road, and we spray painted all the trees that were, that are within this clearing limit, each clearing limits. It wasn't, actually, honestly, it was not as many as I thought it was going to be. Most of the trees are on the smaller side. There's only a couple of trees that are fairly large. I'd say probably the trees that are within that five, five inch D V H and grade of threshold, I don't know, 40, 30?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wrote it today, and that's probably about right. I mean, I didn't count them, but.
Yeah, I didn't see, also, it wasn't as many as I thought it was going to be, because that area is heavily wooded.
Yeah, and one of the things I did notice was, there is a really significant mature trees that are just behind this, that kind of the road frontage trees. So, even though those front trees will be removed, the roadside trees will be removed, there is another, you know, line of fairly dense mature trees behind that.
Correct.
Yeah, we, you, I need a few sugar maples, I know it pain you.
It'd pain me great, actually.
Those are the bigger ones. There was only three or four of that large size, yeah.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Do you want to, it's a public hearing, I don't see anybody necessarily that.
It is, it is a public hearing. If there are any public here that would like to speak to or for or against this, please come forward. Second time, third and last, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I had one other comment. On the very last page, where Phase One kind of ends, the last kind of a butter isn't listed on there, but should be, so that they may have been notified. I don't know if that's common to the opposite side of the road, but that looks like it does, they have property on the Phase One side.
Yep. Is information to be added?
That's just housekeeping.
Just general public information, we will be closing the road during the day during construction. You'll start to see signage and stuff about that. There's going to be an eight-hour window for.
Eight to four.
Six, eight weeks max, but it's probably not going to be that long, but that's part of the, part of the project, so you'll start to see that close from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Do we need a motion, please? We do need a motion.
As Chairman, I move that we approve the town's request for trimming and tree removal on Ledge Farm Road identified in the areas Phase One, for road reconstruction and, for reconstruction.
A second, ma'am.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Next, on the hearing agenda, we have a continued case, number 19008 S U B and S I T, an application from Dumas Developers for a proposed four-lot subdivision with two additional concurrent site plan reviews for 12 units each. Property's located at Route Four in Nottingham, and is identified as Tax Map Six, Lot 22. Let's see, the applicant's representative is here. Could you bring us up to speed of where this application is? I know it's been here for a bit, we've gotten some comments and resolves on those. I think the last request is to go meet with the Conservation Commission, and that has been done with approval. So, if you could just kind of step through, not the whole project, but give us the highlights of what's happened since the last time we've seen it.
Absolutely. So, Mr. Chairman, as a board, my name is Christopher Berry, the surveying engineer, again, representing Lou and Dumas Development Inc. With me tonight is James Hayden, he's actually the project lead on this, throughout the project, and he met with the Conservation Commission last night. And so, I thought it'd be good, just in case there was something that wasn't conveyed to me that we need to discuss, he was here to work together. So, in short, the contract planners provided us with a list of small things that needed to be accomplished, I believe within a few, was it two or three minor things we needed to finalize. We were hoping to just have those as conditions of approval, just a couple of small notations that were missed on the plan. We received a letter from CMA engineers, which we were able to address all of those comments also. We have since come back to the board after those comments were addressed, met with the board a couple of weeks ago now, basically went back through the entire project. The board has approved the waiver requests that we requested, all based on roadway geometry and alignment, discussed parking, architecturals, prior chiefs review, all of those technical matters. And essentially, it came down to the Conservation Commission wanted to take a look at the project independent from the wetlands application process. So, we agreed to meet with them on this last Monday, which James, again, has met with them. I believe you have a small list of notes from that meeting. Many of the notes are really, they're already implemented into plans, as I described to the board in the past. We're sensitive to these, a lot of these issues already, and they're sort of standard operating procedure for us. Things like oversizing culverts with natural bottoms, natural fiber products, outlet structures that are designed in special ways, things of that nature. Those are already implemented into the plans. A lot of these notes that I see have to do with some modifications of plantings, and some additional style plantings within the rain gardens to make them a little more natural. Not heavily planted like the original rain garden styles were 10 years ago, but not the grass-lined ones that are primarily prescribed now. I think the recommendation here is to have some perennials and annuals, and things that will have a little bit better nutrient uptake than just the grass-lined bottom, which we're perfectly fine with. Those plants need very little maintenance also. There are some questions about the HOA from the Conservation Commission and the management plan that we have in place for the stormwater system. We have developed a stormwater management maintenance program, which was part of the original submittal, though that maintenance plan will literally be put inside of the HOA. So, there's no excuse for anybody to have HOA and a separate manual that nobody knows about. They are, they will be one and the same. And that's, we developed that system three or four years ago now, when we worked on projects like this, because we were finding that we had an HOA that had no idea that they were supposed to maintain these objects. There's a document that's really just sitting on my server, and they don't know anything about it. And so, we decided, as we're working with the attorneys, we make it one document, so that it's all referenced, so that when they start working through their bylaws, and working through their annual meetings and their annual budgets, they can see how to properly maintain these rain gardens on an annual basis. So, I think, unless I'm missing something, I think that covers the bulk of the notes from the Conservation Commission meeting. We do have a wetlands permit, which we'll be filing tomorrow. Conservation Commission was kind enough to sign our minimum impact wetlands permit, and the clerk has now signed it, so we'll be able to submit that to the LAC tomorrow, as well as the Wetlands Board. We have an alteration of terrain permit that we'll be filing, and then the NHDOT permit shortly sent to District Six also. So, with that, I have nothing new to present to you. I think Ms. Casella had a small list of conditions that we sort of talked about at the last meeting. Those conditions would remain here this evening, unless there were any additions that the board felt were necessary.
Let me just ask a question. So, are you willing to accept the requirements or recommendations that the Conservation Commission provided in this, in the letter?
Yeah, they all seem very reasonable.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I speak to that a little bit, or am I out of turn?
Well, he's going to accept everything that's in.
There were three items that he didn't touch on in the list of 10.
Is there anything in the letter that you have any issues with?
Nope, but.
The lights on the garages, on timers or remote, so they wouldn't be on all night long.
Yep.
Let me see, water withdrawal estimate, if that's feasible.
The, the water withdrawal estimate.
For the entire unit, how much water would be required every day to be drawn out of the aquifer?
Yeah, that's, those are noted on the plan.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, you need to have a weekly report submitted because of the alteration of terrain, and the Commission would like to be privy to those weekly reports.
No problem.
As we work for USA Springs.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you.
So, just so the boards are aware, we do, will be required by federal mandate to file with the EPA, it's called a notice of intent. And with the notice of intent, we are required to do weekly inspections in addition to any time we get a half an inch of rain. Then, the alteration of terrain will also require weekly inspections, we do them at the same time.
Mm-hmm.
But likely, their requirement is going to be that after any quarter inch of rain, we go out and we do an inspection. So, really, every Wednesday, they're, James is one of them, it's like a ghost town at my office, everybody's out doing their inspections, they come back, they write their reports, and they send them out to the CC list. So, I would imagine that we'll have a pre-construction meeting on this project, where we'll get the distribution list, and we'll forward it right over to you.
Very good, thank you.
Any other comments for what's presented so far? Steph, you have a list of potential conditions?
They're at the end of the report that I gave you guys. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately, but I have it in your packet.
You have, you've got a packet, though.
Sorry.
You have, don't you have it in your packet?
It's not in my packet, no.
It's not in mine either.
It under, it's a box, conditions variable, and I list them all out.
There's no, so there's no change from the last one?
No, they haven't.
Okay.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I didn't get one.
No, you can keep it.
No, actually, pass that. All right.
It's also in the middle.
I'll just go with this one.
I'm looking through that. Can you remind us, have bounds already been set for this?
I'm not sure I want to know the answer to this, but are granite required at all corners, or just at the fronts?
I didn't hear your question.
Are granite required at all corners, or just the fronts? Are granite required at all corners or just the fronts?
The bounds, the bounds.
I thought it was just the fronts, but...
Well, I'll, I'll look it up.
Yeah.
Set, we'll settle it.
I thought it's just pins in the back.
That's...
So I'll read through these conditions of approval that have been recommended by Stratford Regional Planning Commission. So it's planned copies with professional seals and signatures, original mylar with professional seals and signatures, electronic submission per regulation, and then after it's built, there'll be as-built provided. All fees, escrows need to be paid and maintained, a bond estimate, which will then be paid down as the construction goes through, condominium documents, as-built plans for both site plans, additional items to be determined as a part of the plan review hearing. That's not specific enough. What do you mean by that one?
Sorry, I have a question.
So the additional items to be determined as part of the plan review hearing?
So below that are the conditions that I came up with that Mr. Berry has discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, so changes to the...
Changes to the notes and then the condo documents and the...
Okay.
And then to answer your question about monumentation, it's actually page 44 of our subdivision regs, not page 43, but granite bounds shall be set at all property line corners and angles, and at all points of curvature and points of tendency.
So it's all granite?
So basically, there's like 11.8 is the section.
Got it. So you're right, you didn't want to hear it.
Those are the conditions we have currently. Are we, everybody feel we're comfortable at the point of providing a recommendation? Or a motion?
If there's no further comment. Ms. Chairman, I move that we approve case 19-008-SU B and S I T with conditions... Do you need me to write these down, Joanna, or do you...
No.
The conditions that you, I'll write them down.
Thank you.
Conditions that bounds be set, New Hampshire DOT driveway permit or permits be obtained, alteration of terrain permit be obtained, that planned copies with professional seals and signatures, original mylar with professional seals and signatures, and electronic submission per regulations, as-built, some plans required, all fees paid and escrow maintained as required, the bond estimate, condo documents, as-built plans for both site plans, additional items to be determined, oh, sorry, discretion, and the NPDES notice and NOI, and the state permits, which are the curb cut subdivision wetlands and alteration of terrain. Additionally, HOA documents to include road maintenance language, HOA condo documents reviewed and approved by town council as part of the final approval. And the correction, if hasn't been made already, note six on sheet four to state that parcel does not fall within floodplain.
That's the motion.
I will write those down.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on it?
I have a question on it.
Yes.
How do we determine when all these, all these conditions are met? How is that determined?
The information will come to the planning office, and we'll either have Stratford Regional confirm it, or somebody will confirm it within the planning...
So in other words, it'll be confirmed by the, by our planning office before we sign the documents, before we sign the mylar?
Yes.
Okay. I think I might want to amend my motion to add, because I didn't add a sunset date on this. I know we have dates built into our subdivision plans, but I know it's good practice to include that.
What is our date on the subdivision plan?
So you want to amend it?
I'm discussing with the board.
So if you have to...
I believe so.
Do you want to change it to something different?
I would, uh, my thought would be that I would amend it to say that these be done within a period of, you know, either 12 months or two a year for the, for the final approval. And then obviously, then that, the building would be...
Oh, the conditions?
Yeah. So that we don't have this approval lingering out there for an extended period of time.
Right. Steph, do you recognize whether we have that in our subdivision regulation, whether we have a time limit for those conditions to be met?
I believe there is. I don't know off the top of my head.
Expiration of approved plans like that.
I was going to say, I know for activity being done, but I don't know about the conditions being met.
No, hold on, give me a few minutes, I'm sorry.
The expiration, we have an expiration of approved plans outlined, but that's once they're signed. These wouldn't be signed until...
12 months? Six months?
I would say, because it's a pretty substantial...
What seems, well, I don't want to ask the applicant.
No one would want to go shorter than 12 for this portion of it.
To get the conditions approval.
Just because of the...
Alteration of terrain takes a while.
State and federal agencies, so some...
I'm more concerned about DOT.
Yeah.
DOT takes 50 days.
Hmm.
The one you're referring to is two years, right?
Right.
That's deactive and substantial.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'd like to amend my motion. Do I have to retract it, or can I amend it and have it seconded potentially?
We didn't vote, so you can amend.
Okay. I amend my motion to simply add a sunset date for, for these deliverables before final approval, to be one year from today, so September 11th, 2020.
Second.
All right.
That's the amendment. Then we have the vote on the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
And then the motion, seconded.
Second the amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Take a vote on the amendment. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Amendment stands. So your second stands? Any other comments on the motion?
As amended.
Any other comments on the motion as amended? We'll take a vote, then. Those in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody's consideration.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your professionalism and getting all the answers we needed.
I would have been scared, though.
Totally, totally.
Is this any different from what's already in our binder?
It's in our Z O though.
I know.
Is this not from you?
Conservation Commission.
Steph, is this different from what's in our binder already? Application hearings?
I mean, it's good.
I don't, no, I didn't...
Okay.
I didn't know, I'm sorry.
You didn't have copies?
No, I think they were given to me two meetings ago, and I forgot to pass them on.
Okay.
So we'll...
I don't think everybody has them, though.
I, we're having too many discussions here.
Sorry, Ms. Chairman, I passed around. We had had, from SRPC staff at a prior meeting, they'd given us copies of basically just like a cheat sheet of running a meeting, so I passed that out to everyone.
Great. Thank you for sharing. We're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a town meeting planning calendar. Set the first zoning change public hearing date. Steph, you have a deadline for us?
Yeah, so I believe it's on the front of your binders.
Yeah, it's on the inside.
Or on the inside.
One or the other.
One or the other.
One or the other.
And basically, this is a, I don't know where you get it, a list for the zoning changes and due dates, kind of a work plan as what needs to be done and by when. So right now, Joanna included my first and second rough draft reviews. That should be second on October 23rd. And then with the November 13th first final draft, or first final draft, complete and presented to you guys. So that being said, first, Jen and I discussed, and Joanna as well, that the first hearing be held on December 11th. That's a little bit earlier than the January deadline, but that'll give us more time to make edits, as January has a stack of deadlines in there. So we want to give ourselves enough time to review, make any changes that we need to, and come back and get it solved. And that kind of goes along with the law changes, so you guys have a list of, a prioritized list of zoning amendments. And Joanna, Jen, and Dale and I sat down and created this prioritized list, so these first three in the first section are our high priority items. This is the housekeeping, reviewing the outline, making sure everything is up to, up to date and just is where it should be. No number twos, no number threes, no two threes. And then the two and three are things that have been giving them issues fairly frequently. And then from there, in no particular order, four through 12 are additional items that need to be changed in the future, but maybe not this set up.
Do you see any other minor ones that are within this that we would bundle into the kind of housekeeping ones or higher priorities?
So we've already included all the, all the smaller items in there, and then two and three are the two other, you know, subject to number one. Number one's approval would be included as separate articles.
Steph, is there anything in here about setbacks for driveways, so they're not right on the boundary line?
Uh...
I remember Ed had mentioned that last time.
I didn't include it. I apologize if I did.
So the other question I'll have is whether any of these changes will require changes to the subdivision or site plan?
Um, if the setbacks...
More in, more in terminology. You know, if we're, if we're eliminating grandfathered in our zoning, but grandfathered shows up in our subdivision, what, what effect does that have? Because now we don't have a zoning law that allows us to enforce the grandfather under the subdivision.
Jen, do you know how that gets? I think it's just a terminology change for zoning to match statutory language for that one. So I mean, what we would do is as we're going through, just kind of make sure we're taking a quick look at subdivision and site plan simultaneously. Admittedly, we focused on zoning first, because that's more rigid in terms of deadlines.
Yeah. Yeah. No, that's fine. I just want to, looking kind of further down the road to see if there's any of these that might impact it.
Yeah.
And we don't have grandfathered as a definition at all. We do have non-conforming building structure or use, but so...
Well, we're eliminating grandfather.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, so that's good. It's a good sign that we don't have it defined anyway, and we could always add it and say, see, non-conforming.
You'd be surprised how many times that word appears before the Z B A. You keep saying it's not, not a term we're supposed to be using. Well, it's the same thing. It's semantics.
And just for, in general, I know sometimes people, you can't, there's no real good time of the year to do zoning changes. Summer, people are, you know, away, and then holidays, again, it's hard to get people to, their attention, because obviously, there's a lot of conflicting things. But there's, we're kind of set with these dates, that they're not like our choice necessarily. We can work on things, but to put them for a town, for public hearings, and for a board vote is really, I mean, our hands are kind of stuck, correct? In general.
Yeah.
I mean, we can do things earlier, but I think that basically is frowned upon, because then you're stuck with a live regulation that doesn't have any teeth until the next vote.
Yeah, that's, I think, also one of the reasons why we wanted to do it before Thanksgiving, that meeting before Thanksgiving, so...
Yep.
Before things sort of pick up.
And basically, if we do, if we do any of these, like, so we just hit the high priority section, a lot of it is just general formatting, but we probably have to reword the warrant articles, like, so that, imagine, would these would be separate warrant articles most likely?
Yes. Yeah, that's how we were kind of looking at it, and that's, like, we figured that the numbered elements would be individual warrant articles, where the housekeeping amendments, Steph, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we bundled everything that would be non-substantial changes. It's really just shuffling things or correcting terminology, but it would have no impacts on the regulation of land.
So it'd still be, probably have to be written out, like, if section, if Article two fails, then this would be Section 3 dot 2 point 1, so...
Right, exactly. That would be the, kind of that clause that we would have to add to the subsequent warrant articles to say if Article two fails, then this will be renumbered as Section A B C or something, however.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of making sure that the number stays consistent, and things don't get mucked up if, God forbid, one fails and the other doesn't.
Right. Go ahead. So the first meeting, planning, the first public hearing for this, you'd be looking at December, right, the beginning of December?
December 11th, yeah.
Okay.
Joanna, we're adding good responses from the other boards for the September 25th joint meeting.
Have I had responses? Yes.
So, okay, so that looks like it's good to go.
I won't be here.
I haven't had great responses yet. I think I might send out a reminder.
Great.
But I've had two yeses from other boards, so Sam and another member from Z B A. That's all so far.
And me, saying I couldn't.
Right.
Steph, do you feel that with the feedback on September 25th, that you'll have enough time to get that rough draft by the 9th? Is that enough?
Yes. I would like to start drafting language before then.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think if there are any changes that need to be made, I'm confident that I can make that in that timeframe.
Would you recommend having maybe that draft for the 25th? Just as a rough, rough draft to hand out and say, this is the direction we're going?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
You know, maybe that can help guide our... You know, maybe that can help guide our meeting as well.
Joanna, do we have any more cases on the books so that these can be discussed in our meetings? Do you know? Any potential? I know you can't know for October too far.
No. There are not any, well, the 25th applications are due on the 16th for the October night. And I haven't heard any rumblings of anything.
Okay.
So tonight, we're really just trying to get, make sure the schedule's good. And do you want us to go through these as far as the high priority and other changes? Tonight?
Yeah, sure.
We've got a little bit of time, so why don't we do that and help you along here?
Yeah. And if you have any input as far as the other changes, as time permits, I can start to organize those and get all the priorities.
Well, I think we've gone through the kind of housekeeping ones. I think everybody's in agreement that that's a necessary thing to happen. So I'll skip over that unless we need to go back. But then the second one is this Article 2, Section C. And that one is... Changing the frontage on a Class 5 road. What do we have it now? Is it...
Oh, what we're actually talking about is changing the frontage requirement on private roads.
Yes, so the current requirement is 200 feet of frontage on a Class 5 or better road. The issue that Dale is experiencing is development on private roads. So even if they have 200 feet of frontage on a private road, it still fails because it's not a Class 5 or better road.
And that's what the majority of our ZBA cases are.
So we would be adding in this Class 5? Is that primarily?
Class 5 is already in there.
Correct.
Class 5 is in there. It would be for private roads or classics.
So I know we had some discussion with the select board before too, or guidance, because there's obviously, there's a lot of stuff in town with private roads, merchant lanes, classics roads being discussed. But the biggest issue is that a lot of times, ownership record is unknown. And so trying to use those processes to kind of determine that or set, you know, get some things documented at that point to clarify that issue so that if something does happen or, you know, they can say, well, that culvert is the responsibility of this property owner because it's theirs. That's just my general remembrance of it, but, so.
The big issue for the ZBA, though, is not so much related to a road and its standard. The biggest issue is that anyone who wants to build on their property that's on that private road has to go before the ZBA the way this is worded, regardless of whether or not they meet all frontage and setback requirements. They can have 500 feet of, not likely, I suppose, with those lake areas, but they can meet all other requirements without any question. But because they're on a private road, they have to go before the ZBA for approval. So it's not generally an issue about the road itself, although we have had a few cases that have meandered down those paths.
Is there a standard with the state on that? Do they, or the, was it OSI now, OEP, whatever it was? Do they have any kind of guidance on how towns should deal with? I mean, we're not the only town. I see it in Northwood a lot recently too, with a lot of things being developed on, you know, private roads.
About the ISO of, Jen?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's any guidance on, like, a harbor to travel.
I have that book.
Kind of for another definition.
Do you have that?
Uh, no. Are you at the old version?
Yeah. So RSA 674-24I, frontage means the portion of a lot bordering on a highway, street, or right of way.
So a private road would probably technically fall under a right of way?
Yes. Okay, so well, that's the reason for that one. We're okay, everybody, right? We're trying to...
Work through that.
Through that one. It's Article 2, Section 2, Residential Agricultural District, revised for clarity. Yeah, I would agree. There's a lot of ambiguity in it. Specify permitted uses, yes. Consider 20-foot setback instead of 50. We should talk about that.
That's for the front, right?
That's the...
The sides have already been reduced.
So we amended that a couple years ago?
Yeah, for accessory buildings.
I think it might have been the 2016 version or 2017 amendment.
But we didn't touch the frontage.
So is this here the frontage? Is that the front setback?
The front setback, yeah.
We're typically seeing...
I believe the sides are already plenty.
Typically seeing 20 feet for the side, 20 feet for the front?
Yeah, that's a recommendation for Dale.
And I think for a village area, village district, 20 feet is better than 50 feet.
Yeah, I know there was talk about, when towns create, like, a village district or a town center district, sometimes they'll reduce the frontage so you can get like that small town feel or that, you know, the main street feel. But that's usually involves sidewalks, things like that. So cars can park up front and the stores are right there and they're approachable. My opinion, my personal opinion on the, for the rest of the town or agricultural section is that 50 feet tends to be better.
For residential agriculture? Yeah, I can see for town center stuff.
And right now, the way we treat, so new subdivisions is, when you're looking at the law envelope, it's basically 50 feet all around because it's what areas is suitable for placement of dwelling unit. So that's where they get the contiguous area. So there's less restriction up to 20 feet on the sides for certain structures, but it's actually 50 feet around for the contiguous area.
Maybe that's where, is that what he's referring to?
I don't know.
Well, we'll see if we can get Dale into that discussion.
Joanna, do you know Dale? Will Dale come to the house?
No, he will not be in less. So we can discuss that a little tomorrow and maybe get written in a direction from him.
Yeah, and the other thing is that for this section, there's a lot of 50 feet versus 20 feet setbacks for various things. I don't know exactly which one he was referring to in it. Because it is, I mean, there's the... I mean, if you read that whole thing, 50 feet, 20 feet, 50 feet, 20 feet, is all over the place in here.
The biggest is septic.
Yeah.
And then septic for the state is 10. And that's another big thing with us for ZBA. We get all sorts, especially on those nonconforming lots, where they are even less than the 10-foot requesting. We've had several recently, but that were nine, right, Joanna?
Yeah, they got relief from the zoning board, but they still have to get...
From the state, right. But they, but we've had two recently that have asked for less than the 10 feet.
I think usually fall under that. I think, and especially on some of the nonconforming lots, you end up having to have a specialized septic system or just a...
Well, and they're talking about that anyway, these specialized systems, because they're on the lake. But we are much more stringent and it is coming before the ZBA all the time on it.
The science behind that 10-foot buffer by the state bothers me because that's, it doesn't, it doesn't count in, you know, soil types, whether it's sand, whether there's slope. It's just scary, you know? To have the edge of your septic only 10 feet away from your butter.
They do count soils. I mean, it takes into account soils.
Then what is the 10, what is the 10-foot? Can you, can you make that buffer wider depending on the soils and the slope and the ledge?
Yeah, they won't allow you to even put one there if it's got ledge or poorly drained soils.
And approved.
Yeah.
Well, that's what they have the test fits for.
Yeah.
And the thing too, Sue, is with these ZBA cases, butters are notified. And I can't think of but one case where an butter has come in and asked about it. Others have been, the butters have approved or nobody showed up, so.
So if the ZBA approves somebody's system that's within nine feet of a, of the neighbor, that doesn't meet the state standard?
They have to go through the state, but they can't go to the state for it until they get relief from the ZBA.
All right.
So basically, it sounds like the majority of the cases that go to the ZBA are specifically for nonconforming lots of record versus new subdivisions. So, you know, maybe we want to treat that differently without getting it too complex of a section, you know? I think there's a way to clarify this, the current verbiage. And I think, I remember Dale, I think it was the septics specifically that he was talking about. But definitely his opinion.
Can some of these dimensional requirements be tabledized? For lack of a better term? Can we put these in a table? I mean, is there a good way to put these in a table that...
I can do that for you, yeah?
Well, I'm thinking in, because I see a lot of regulations that have tables right in there. Septic setback, 20 feet.
Does that need to go through a rule? Yeah, okay.
Even if we put existing, existing dimensions into a table?
Would that be a nonsubstantive change? Okay.
Sounds housekeeping.
We talked about doing it that way a while ago, but, I mean, because we had it reworded. And then Joanna, I think, had mentioned putting it into a table. And we just decided to wait. So I'm glad you brought that back up because I think it would work out a whole lot better. If you had the standard new subdivision, nonconforming lots, traditional, whatever, site plans.
Yeah, I think it makes it clearer.
Cleaner, definitely, than all this wording. This is, has been a nightmare for us.
So let me jump down to temporary housing. Amendment change and definition of temporary. So amendment change, what is, what's meant by that?
So there's no definition of temporary housing or temporary at all as far as what constitutes temporary? So that would need to be defined and then identified under temporary housing. How long does a unit, how long is it considered temporary for? So that would be in addition.
I think we talked about this before with Dale, when you brought this up. I think we talked about how do you determine when they, when it was started. So we talked about potentially adding a permit to it, which would probably be under the purview of the Board of Selectmen or the Building Inspector. I don't know how that would work. But that way, they would, you know, someone would apply, get a permit to have, you know, a camper or something somewhere. And that way, you have a start date and it can be easily checked and confirmed when they're in, when they're out, and that everything was met.
Okay.
And I think it makes it a little more easily enforceable for the Building Inspector.
So I discussed this part a little bit with Chris today. He said, once we have it defined what temporary housing is, then the Board of Selectmen can work on the policy. But without it even defined in our zoning ordinance, they can relax even further.
Okay. We can come up with a definition of temporary.
Right.
Nice stuff.
Does that mean we have to define what temporary housing is as well as how long temporary is?
Yeah.
Yeah, what and how long. That's, we would, I would assume that we would just take some guidance from other communities that have that.
Right. Not reinvent the wheel. And I would strongly suggest to the BOS that it be something that is a D2 so that people aren't just figuring, oh, I can renew this anytime and making their temporary housing be something that they can, they just continue to go through and set a timeline for how many times they can renew without there being some substantial changes to their life where they aren't able to continue with their, their build. Because we all know that people, if there's a way to abuse a loophole, they will.
Good point. So I don't know if that would be under us where we would say, you know, six, you know, six months per year per, per lot. But we think we'd also discuss putting a max number of temporary housings on, per lot. That way, you don't end up with a temporary campground that you didn't mean to approve.
I can see what other regulations are out there that have that.
So those are one, all the ones that we're looking to tackle for this upcoming change.
I think the only thing we have now about temporary living quarters is under P, motorhomes and travel trailers. That's, but there's not much in there.
Okay, so let's, maybe I'll just read through the rest of these quickly. And if there's other ones that we should be thinking about, we can just add them to this list. And let's not eliminate what's here. Let's just, if there are things that come to people's mind that is missing. So this fourth one is defining the building height. It's not, I guess it's loosely defined, so that's probably something that's good to get better definition on. Creating ADUs, specific section heading and amendments for that. I think we've talked about that in the past. And I think we, while we're, we want to align with the state's requirement of ADUs, there are some variations to that that communities can provide. So I think we're, it's a good one to include. Six is the max lot coverage at 40. Most towns are at 30. We've got a two-acre lot minimum. I'm not sure what most towns are. Maybe they're two acres as well. Something to be considered. So seven is the flood hazard area. And this is updating FEMA maps. Eight is junkyards. Consider adding no more than two unregistered, uninspected vehicles.
Few homes right along 152 that'll...
Yeah, I mean, that's one we, we need to consider carefully because, you know, there's a lot of people that race cars and have those at their homes that, you know, they're not registered, that have hobby cars that they fix up. So those are things we should probably consider.
Yeah, but if they've got weeds growing around them and through them, then they probably aren't doing any of those things with them.
True, but maybe there's a different regulation that can tell people to clean up their front... True, but maybe there's a different regulation that can tell people to clean up their front yard. I don't know. Nine is Section G, clarifying major versus minor home occupation. We've seen that a couple of times, so that's good. Article, this 10, impact fees. As responsible for and committed provisions of the public facilities. Clarification to applicability. Is that from Dale as well? The impact fees?
Yes, yep. That was a staff suggestion.
Well, and we just recently had a case that brought that whole piece to light that I don't think you were here for.
Yeah, I heard about it.
Okay, yeah. And the ZBA definitely wants that addressed.
The staff item that we discussed relative to that was the, I don't have it in front of me. The language in there that said, if a subdivision was approved before the application, you had five years. That's all expired at this point.
Right.
Irrelevant at this point, so.
Yeah. Just eliminate some of that language.
Right. Couldn't that be brought up into housekeeping to get rid of that language?
That'd be substantive.
But it's not...
That's true.
I think when you start talking about impact fees, it's probably gonna, people can take that a lot of different ways.
But if you're not changing the impact fee or its structure in any way, just eliminating...
But if it says impact fee, it can go in a lot of different directions. So I just don't want that to...
Apply to it.
I mean, maybe not under the housekeeping.
We had one, though, in the last, I mean, that's one case that came before us in the ZBA for that in the last five years, I think. So don't want to get too far ahead of trying to kill ourselves and streamline this section. I would like it to be clear for everybody, but like some of these, it's, you know, in order of hierarchy, what we're seeing, that one.
Right.
I mean, it's one. And it was because it happened to be approved like 10 years ago, 15 years ago.
One other thing that you do want to mention is because we have grouped all of these together, it's going to be one article that passes or fails. So just something to keep in mind if there's something that you might...
Impact that?
Right.
Separate non-conforming and conforming lot regulations. So that's charts, paragraphs. I think we, I think that we push that till that more substantial changes. New additions, restricting adult entertainment, bookstores, marijuana grow facilities. Some things that are fairly new. Adding fencing provisions. Steep slopes. Stream buffer ordinance. And minimum disturbance amendment. Is that land disturbance? Does anybody know what that is? Addition of minimal, maybe I'm talking myself.
Three amendments or regulation drafts that have been developed a long time ago. And Joanna, were we sure that it was Bruce Mayberry? No?
I don't think, I don't think it was Bruce for that.
Okay, well, no, okay. So that was the title? I'm guessing it was meant to say minimum land disturbance. But just, yeah. C, D, and E all have drafts. They may be outdated, but there is...
Probably Jack Maddy.
Jack Maddy, there we go, thank you. It's gonna drive me nuts.
Probably.
Oh, Jack Maddy.
Yep.
Did I talk about the stream buffer? Yes, that was last year, developed last year.
Are there any other ones that people, the only other one I mentioned was... And this hasn't come up really, except for major subdivisions. But it would have been my mention at one point was creating a setback for driveways from property lines. And then, and of course, to consider that, but more importantly, would be roads, I think. You know, to have those setback, unless it's a shared driveway.
Setbacks from roads?
No, setbacks from property lines. So if you have current housing and current properties, and then a subdivision comes in, they can build right on the property line.
They could build a road right on the back of the property line. That's one that we saw.
Which, you know, isn't, doesn't add for harmonious living for everybody.
Well, even one of the plans that came before us this, within this year, was a house with a common driveway servicing, was it two multifamily homes? It's like, it made absolutely no sense to me.
Right.
Those multifamily homes are going to be using that road a whole lot more than that one house. Remember that one?
Oh, that was, yeah, and it was changed because of those comments, right.
But that's what I'm saying, is if we don't, because you brought it up, if we don't have something, then we're gonna get more of those.
Okay, so that's an added one. Any others?
Airbnb. Any acknowledgement of the possible impact of those accommodations.
We could have it as a topic.
Some towns have developed rules about them. How long you can stay, and blah, blah, blah. Separate from ADUs.
See, what other...
I don't, yeah.
Yeah. How does that impact the community, except for some people coming in to stay for a day or two if they're, somebody's...
You know, I went to a conference a year ago, and that was one of the sessions I went to. I don't remember anything substantive. But they said, if you don't address it, then something might happen, then you have no control. A party house or something like that.
Well, we don't have any recourse if someone rents their house out. If somebody just is renting a house for a yearly rental, or, I mean, what's the difference of that and an Airbnb?
In a weekend?
So I think the communities, so I know Portsmouth had a lot in the news about doing this. The arguments, I think, about it are that these are short-term rentals generally. So it could be nightly, weekend, three days, whatever. You can change the kind of nature of the community. So you potentially then have someone that's not, you could have more housing that's not owner occupied in a community, and then have a lot of in and out. So you're potentially having additional issues seen with that, where it's... So, you know, we regulate, we'd probably regulate a hotel or motel, or something of that nature, or a campground. You could potentially get into issues where, you know, if there's a large percentage of the town where this started occurring, and there's no guidance for the building inspector enforcement, then there's no, nothing they can do really.
So the real question is whether Airbnb is a commercial...
Venture.
Venture, or it's residential. That's what it really is.
Rather than a business, but it is a business.
And most of the time, you know, you're not, so putting an insurance hat on for a second, you're not longer on a homeowner's type of coverage. You're on a separate type of policy, depending on how often you're renting it and everything. So you're not, you know, so there is a change that occurs.
You don't read the fine print on those Airbnb things? You waive everything.
Yeah.
Point taken, though, yes.
If I just might add, one of the other issues that I've heard about is Airbnb's not being registered as rental properties, because they're considered, you know, if somebody goes away for the weekend, rents out their house. It's not really a long-term rental. But then the taxes aren't being paid on that rental property, and the impacts are coming out of other budgets.
Is the state looking at it? Was, the state was kind of looking at that, I believe, to see if they could kind of add, like, room and meals tax to it, or?
And I think they just came up with a study commission in the end. I have to go back and look what happened to the legislation. I think the other side is life safety code. That it's, they're not being inspected or required to meet, like, fire and life safety codes that they would otherwise have to comply with. Say a multifamily, or hotel, or bed and breakfast type of property. So that's the other piece, is that risk and liability.
But isn't that something the homeowner's taking on and not the town? That's why I'm wondering.
Because they may not have any expectation, they may have expectation of certain safety codes where they're staying. I think if, I don't want to name the town, because I don't want to get it wrong, but the surrounding town, I think, has fire code that you have to have sprinklers if you have like an Airbnb or a rental room with a house. So like, you may be buying with a smoke detector in your home, or whatever. But if you have a rental within the home, it has to be fire rated completely differently.
Again, that comes back to whether it's a commercial enterprise or not.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, for somebody that has a small house that is away part of the year, and they have somebody coming in, I don't understand why we would be wanting to impact their ability to have their home lived in while they're gone. It just doesn't make sense to me.
I think that's where the balance comes in, you know, is to, if you do, if you do decide to regulate it, how do you balance to make sure you're not impacting that kind of example? Or the people that, you know, or maybe their teachers, and they travel during the summer, and they cover that up and come that way. Versus, you know, versus the situation where it's a full-time rental, or, you know, with very short-term rents, it's not.
And I see that as being totally different from somebody who has just these part times, they're gone away, and they have somebody staying, so they have it as a B and B, if you want, where, you know, I'm gone for three months this summer, but somebody come in and stay, and so my house isn't occupied. Because don't forget, I mean, we're talking about homeowners. People are paying their taxes on their home, and the more we regulate what they do, the more we're tying hands with them being able to use their property. And to be able to pay their taxes if they're gone and not earning the amount of money they would normally would be by being around. This may be a way that they pay taxes. Do we really want to restrict them from being able to do that?
I think the argument with that is, though, if your neighbor is doing this, and they're having people that are just coming in and out of that house, different people, different every day, or every other day, transitioning over, you're getting a different makeup of the neighborhood. So you're a property owner as well, and you're, when you buy your home, you're looking at a community and making a determination based on what's there. You're buying into a residential area, and all of a sudden, it's no longer, it's more of a commercial area, because now it's operating more as a hotel. Whether, you know, so I think it all depends on volume and frequency. When you look at this without over restricting it, but we also, you know, we have our minor and major home occupations that, you know, we talk about, you know, number of employees, and, you know, number of vehicles and things like that. But this potentially could have a bigger impact than most of those could. I think it's a, there's a lot of sides to it, and I agree with a lot of what you're saying. I think that's where the, that's where the very, yeah, very...
We'll add it on to the list for a more detailed discussion.
Huge place that people want to come.
It's on the list.
Airbnb, really, exactly.
All right, is that, is that all we can put on the list for today?
That's enough.
That's enough. All right, so we're going with this list. We're going with the high priority changes as you have them here, as that initial change.
Awesome.
All right.
Did we add driveway setbacks into that first part, though, or did we not?
Yep.
We did, okay, have thoughts on?
Driveway setbacks into the high priority?
No.
Okay.
No?
On?
Okay.
No.
No.
All right. Next, we all had stuff from, information from us for that?
Yeah, unless you guys have any questions or...
So one question, I'll have a question. The, with all of these high priorities and longer-term priorities, how would you approach changing the zoning ordinance? Would you think of coming up with a, doing it all at once? And this is what your zoning ordinance would be? Or do them in total stages?
Right now, we're thinking stages. So this, these top three are our first, our first go for this year.
I know for approvals, yes. I'm thinking more on what does this look like once we're done with our vision?
So right now, I was just focusing on, you know, getting input and putting it all in one place. There was one list that we had, that Joanna had in the office, and then various other comments. So right now, I was just focusing on putting the list together.
I think it's good. I think it, I'm not saying it has to be done now. I think it's an iteration that we might want to consider when we're, after we've discussed those lower priority things. Just to see how that kind of shakes out in the overall structure.
I'm also curious to see what the other boards have for comments, too. So until we get the full picture, I don't think there's, I don't have an answer.
No, and that's fine. I think it's just for discussion, really, is what it...
You also have, Steph's also got an annotated version of the zoning ordinance now. So that list that you have, she's got that pasted into comment bubbles in the entire document.
Right.
So you can kind of get a bigger picture. We just...
Yeah.
She gave you the list.
And that's okay. I just, I think at the, kind of the end of, you know, after these amendments go in, you know, think about that once we have them put in. Maybe that's a spring thing to think about. Okay.
I have a question about, I don't know if this would fall under this, this is kind of my question. But with the Guile Road property in that cemetery, there's ever development on a piece of land where there's a history of a cemetery being there, but there's no actual physical anymore that you can see the cemetery? Is it possible to add in the zoning ordinance to require that the developer go beyond, have a GPS kind of thing done to find the cemetery? Before they can develop?
Is that just a working narrative, I mean, like, we actually want them to identify it as part of the subdivision process?
Well, part of the state rule, rules or regulations on cemeteries, you cannot...
Right, but if you, you can't see the cemetery anymore.
So one thing we can do as a board is request the applicant provide an archaeological study or analysis of the history of that. So that's something we can always do as a part of any subdivision application. But it is a good point. I mean, if there are other, maybe not even just specific to cemeteries, maybe there's other significant...
Historical monuments.
Historical monuments or something. That's what our natural heritage state board helps out with.
But I know our hands were really tied with that particular property and them locating that cemetery. I mean, we definitely have information that it's there, but there's no longer any headstones.
I'm not surprised that a lot of those get knocked over just from age. Because we've had to repair several on our three main cemeteries.
Yeah, I mean, some...
And then the earth just covers them over.
Right, they just have fallen.
The abandoned cemeteries that they moved headstones, it's not the, the abandoned, all the abandoned cemeteries in town where they moved headstones, but not necessarily, they didn't remove.
Right, and these were field stones, and they were definitely moved. But in some cases, they are just smaller ones, people don't realize it's a cemetery, and they just... take the stones out.
I think we, that might fall more under our subdivision regs, where we have, like, our different studies that we mentioned, that may be required. We potentially could add it in there, is to ma, you know, I think we have language like, and other studies as the board may deem, but we could potentially specifically outline it, that that might be one that we would require a study or, you know, so...
Do we, do we have a map, I mean, of the town's cemeteries?
We're working on, we have one, but it's not completely accurate right now.
So, that's something we could fold into, you know, if it's shown on the town's map, then a archaeological letter or investigation has to be provided.
Right, how far, like, what do they have to do? I mean, we definitely have it on the map, it's on the master plan, and they're still saying it's not there.
We could, we can put that scope on to the archaeological expert and say, it's gotta be, you know, provide a, whatever the significance is, they have to provide that information.
Because DHR basically said you need to have it in your zoning ordinance, is that the developers require to hire someone to find it.
So, what she's, I think what you're saying, though, is that, so say it's in an area that the developer is not even planning on touching, be an open space, for example, if it's an open space subdivision, but we could potentially still require that they identify it as part of the approval process.
Is it the identification, or the protection, or both of them?
Both, yeah.
I think we can still work that in our subdivision.
I mean, is it documented, though? I mean, it's documented that there's a cemetery there.
Mm-hmm.
But we can't pinpoint to exact...
Everyone here says, I can't see, have somebody, having people dig up all over the place to find it. I mean, I imagine there's more cemeteries than even the ones they probably had plotted. I think it seems like, like, if you walk in the wood, you do see stone in, like, that's a, that's a headstone or something, but...
But if they're on a documented map that we, you know, that's got, gotten some credit, that it's, you know, has something, then a piece, somebody's property that comes in for redevelopment or something that has that, certainly would be good to have the archaeologist onboard to...
And who would pay for that?
The developer.
Yeah.
Leanne, didn't you say that there was an instrument out there, like sonar, that can detect stuff underneath?
It's very expensive.
Yeah.
Like $4,000 a day to rent the equipment and the person.
So, to drop it out?
Cover kind of a big area, usually, depending on what's there currently. I don't know how we'd be able to fit that in the zoning at all, unless it's part of our setbacks or that they're not disturbed, but I think it'd be more of the subdivision regs.
Yep, yep. Let me go around and just give, anyone have updates? Steph?
Um, I have one update, and that is that I will be attending the New Hampshire Municipal Association Land Use Law Conference in October. I wasn't sure if anybody else had any interest in it.
Joanna and I are going.
Oh, you guys are? Awesome. I wasn't sure if anybody else had interest, or I'd seen the flyer. A lot of planning board procedural refreshers and stuff of that nature.
What date is that?
October 5th.
Okay. What's the next meeting act, after October 5th?
9th.
So, on the 9th, we'll have reports from...
And our...
Well, we can push it onto the members that are going, it doesn't have to be you two.
Yes.
Do a presentation.
We can do that.
Joe?
Uh, only that work obligations, I won't be able to attend the next meeting.
I just wanted to make a general announcement to the public and to all of us, that Household Hazardous Waste Collection is gonna be this Saturday over in Raymond, and information is posted on the town webpage. They will take five pounds or five gallons, whichever is more, no latex paint, no motor oil.
Thanks. I don't have anything. So, as Teresa mentioned, she's not gonna be at the next meeting either, so, that's two. So, if anybody else isn't gonna be here, thinks they're not gonna be here, please just email the board, so we, or Joanna, so we know, so we have a quorum. And if you have comments and you're not gonna be here, you know, that you want to add to the discussion, send those in to Dirk or Joanna, too, please. Other than that, I don't think I have any else.
Tyler?
Just, I mean, briefly, the select board last meeting, we talked about tax deed policy, staffing budget 2000, through 2020, the Lake Host program update, and the most popular one was the polling hours for upcoming elections. That's about it.
Which we already talked about.
Teresa?
I'm going to the, writing on the 5th.
I am fine.
I'm going to the road one on the 4th.
Good.
Joanna, anything else?
No.
Updates from the world of Joanna?
No, actually, I really think it's a good thing right now.
Okay, so that leaves us with some minutes.
The road one, I think in their notes, did they talk about private roads on that, too? So, what they were gonna be talking about? So, yeah, if you could just see...
I'll take good notes.
Whatever they mentioned on that, so we can have some guidance, that'd be great.
Well, before we do the minutes, we do have the agenda of public comment, and there are two people out in the audience, and I didn't know if anybody... Sam, did you want to make any?
I just want to remind people about the Nottingham Earth Day on the 21st.
Great. Earth Day on the 21st.
At Nottingham School?
At the school.
Are you running the 5K, Sam?
No. I'm walking the 5K. I'm too busy to have one or more booths.
All right, so we are on minutes. There's four meetings worth of minutes, and I expect that they're all correct. So, I'd entertain a motion for all four.
Mr. Chair? Should I say something first?
No.
There are edits. They're just edited.
Yes, please.
Well, I just handed my edits to Joanna tonight.
So, can we just approve them as edited?
I'm not sure. Can we do that, Joanna?
Yes. Yours is good to me.
Okay.
There were more clerical errors, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing substantiative, substantive?
No, I added one sentence, I think, to one of the sets of minutes. I don't remember what date that was. It was on the second page, so it must have been the, the two-pager.
You asked what type of easement at the Martinier and Waverly Cotton Plan?
Mm-hmm.
So, I'll have to listen to the recording for that one. And the chair also directed Ms. Mooney's, Ms. August 14th, Ms. Mooney to put this concern in writing in address to the PD. That was in regards to...
The dorms. Yeah, yeah. But you would ask that I send a letter along to the fact that they hadn't shown up yet to the conservation?
Right.
Okay, okay, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the planning board minutes as amended for May 8th, July 10th, July 24th, and August 14th, all of 2019.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? None. Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ayes, Gary?
Good catch-up, Joanna.
Thank you.
Another motion?
Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Excellent.
Second.
Motion, second. Favor, aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.